Be careful, I might.
Okay, welcome. It's City Council's regular meeting. It's Tuesday the 20th. Glad to have you all here. We'll call the roll for the council, because we don't do that every time. Brian? Here. Jeff?
Present.
Art?
Here.
Travis? Huh? Lynn? Okay. So two of them are gone. They're excused tonight. They had family things with graduation. So we have a full quorum. And the full co- no, we have a legal quorum. We have three councilmen and the mayor here for tonight. And we are glad where we're at. We'll get underway. I'd like to ask if someone would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'll do it, Mayor.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I ask if someone would give us an invocation or an inspirational thought for the evening tonight?
I'll be glad to.
Thanks, Art.
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this evening to be able to meet as a city council. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy. We express our gratitude for all that thou hast blessed us with. Help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire community. We're grateful for our citizens and for our city staff. And we ask thee to bless them in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to know if or have any of you declare a potential conflict of interest, if any, on any of the agenda items tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. We've had a chance to look at the meeting minutes for both councils. Well, we'll start with the work session of May 6th. Are there any corrections, additions, changes we need to make on those? We good to move on? Then we'll go to the regular meeting on May the 6th. The same question?
There was a very minor little tweak and Emily's taking care of it.
Okay, great. Bills and expenditures from the 3rd of May to the 16th of May, total of $2,384,473.76. You've had a chance to look at that? Are there any issues or changes?
For the vast crowd that's here, I'd like to point out something. Of that $2.3 million, which is a lot of money, one-third of it, or $765,000, was not money that was the city's. It was money that we had received as a bond, and it was refunded to the people that paid the bond.
Yeah. That's been one of those things that we've been working on for.
So it looks like we're spending a lot of money, but some of it wasn't ours.
Well, it's mandate that came from.
Wasn't ours to keep.
Yeah, so that's okay. I would like to entertain, oh, yeah, I would like to entertain a motion to, for those three items, 1, 2, and 3.
So moved.
Second that.
Ryan?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the public forum and like to invite Jim. It's good to see you, by the way.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, glad you're here.
All right. You look a little lopsided here today. I'm gonna be leaning to the right. All right, Mayor and City Council, I'm Jim Rowland, the president and CEO of the Payson-Santaquin Chamber of Commerce. And it's my privilege to present the chamber's quarterly report and keep you informed on what we're up to these days. So first, no business community is complete without its Chamber of Commerce. We're dedicated to helping local businesses find the resources needed to grow, gain visibility, and establish credibility. The Chamber is the essential place where businesses network, learn from each other, and find support. We're the voice of the business community, constantly working to make Santaquin a better place for businesses to thrive. As businesses succeed, our local economy improves. The Chamber strengthens this economic climate, which in turn enhances the quality of life for everyone in our community. Santaquin is one of Utah County's fastest-growing communities and welcoming many new residents with diverse skills, fresh ideas, and a desire to start businesses. While this growth excites some and scares others, the members of the business community I work with here in Santaquin are united by a common goal: to make this community a better place. We work together to create jobs, support the local economy, and build a strong, vibrant community for all. We at the Chamber are deeply committed to the prosperity of all our local enterprises, tirelessly providing resources, networking opportunities, and promotional activities that enhance their growth and success. And our strong partnership with the Santaquin City has been a key to reaching these goals. And we deeply appreciate your collaboration and the financial support that makes our progress possible. We look forward to this continued collaboration and hope to remain a valued partner, trusted with your essential financial and emotional support in the upcoming budget. And by the way, last month we came, we weren't supposed to be here. And I knew that, but I didn't get the message to Chris. This month I got here an hour early.
You're just excited to be here. This is great.
So I, so I was.
Were you able to go to any of the local businesses and spend some money?
I was able to contribute to your tax fund.
That was the whole idea.
That worked out good.
Yeah.
And I found, I thought the new restaurant, what is it called?
Wild Thistle.
Wild Thistle. I thought they were in the Family Dollar building. I kept hearing Family something.
Family Tree.
But I popped into Old Pioneer Press, and I says, "Have you been to the new White Thistle over there?" And he said, "No, they're right next door." So I found them, but they're closed, so, but we'll get them.
Currently, they're only open for breakfast and coffees and teas and that kind of stuff.
Not really lunch.
And early lunch. They're not open for, if you come in the afternoon, you're probably gonna miss them.
They close at 3.
To get out.
So, but that's exciting. So congratulations. I hear nothing but good things about them so far. The first quarter of the year saw us recognize some of the local businesses and celebrate our entire business community at the annual Chamber Awards Gala. A special shout out to Jones Paint and Glass and Lion's Pride Insurance for their generous sponsorship and support of this event in Santaquin City for hosting us in your beautiful building. We hosted our third annual Family Bowling Night in March, emphasizing the importance of balancing work and family. Over 120 people were in attendance, and it was a great night of fun and networking. Again, Jones Paint and Glass, along with several other businesses, sponsored the event, linking their brands with the Chamber and family values. Last month, we released our annual Community Guide magazine. Everybody get a copy? I have plenty if you need some. I know there's some down in the rec calendar down there. I think I might have given some up front.
I think there's some of the.
Yeah, there might be up there, too. But the, let's see, which features over 300 activities and events in Santaquin and its surrounding areas. So we find that most people really like this magazine because of all those events listed around the area. So they tend to hang on to it throughout the summer. They probably read the mayor's message over and over again, the inspiration that that provides. So we appreciate your involvement.
Gonna have to put some more jokes or something into it.
And we encourage you to check out the Chamber members who are listed in the back of the book, to check out what they do and support their businesses to the best of your ability. We celebrated the grand opening or reopening with a ribbon cutting celebration at Evergreen Home Interiors here in Santaquin, Tabitha's Way New Facility and Spanish Fork, and Zion's Bank and Good Rest Med Spa in Payson. These events generate unity and excitement in our community, and we are excited to support more celebrations. And if Facebook is true, in Santaquin on Monday at noon, I hear there's gonna be ribbon cutting happening up in the canyon.
Have you not been contacted yet?
Jason just contacted.
He has, that's why he knows about it.
That was just shortly after he was asked to contact you, so we had that really close.
I gave him a heads up this morning a little bit.
He said it was happening sometime, right? So I guess the decision made. So we're very excited about that, and I'm hoping my calendar is open to come and participate. So Monday at high noon, right?
Yeah, what about the ribbon? Are we good with where we need to be? Yeah, we'd love to have you there.
I'll either be there or I'll get it here.
Well.
So as one of those new residents that Jason mentioned that may not have a clue what these words all mean, as you speak of the canyon, parks, and camps, and roads, and gates, I think the more you can put out on social media to help some of us newbies in the area to know where you're talking.
Did you share that personally?
I did not. I was.
So you're at fault with this, because what we're looking to do is get people to open up the kimono.
I was too busy writing my speech tonight, so when I get home, I will be sure to share.
And I'm ruining it for you, aren't I?
I'll be sure to share that.
Okay.
All right.
Well, it won't be open all the way to Loop Road for another two weeks, because they can't get equipment on the mud and the snow up above.
So I was asking Jason, is it paved all the way to the Loop?
It is paved all the way to where the gate is, where you turn around and come back down Santaquin Canyon.
Oh, really?
The rest, the next six miles is gravel.
Ah, so that's why I could never find it when I went along Nibbo Loop. I was looking for the big road to Santaquin. It never showed up.
Oh, there's a sign. There's a huge sign there.
I still missed it.
It's even a stop sign if you're coming up from Santaquin.
All right, well, we'll learn. We'll learn. So we're excited about that. And we also hope to have some ribbon cuttings at several other businesses just opening up. Hopefully Murdoch, any word on Murdoch? Have you heard?
Yeah, they hope to be in on the 2nd.
Is that a grand opening celebration?
Yes, and I would suggest that you talk with Blake or Dane.
Yep.
And they would have that all set up for you. I'm sure they would love to have people there, so.
Yeah, we've been reaching out to Dane, so.
I talked to Blake Monday, yesterday, and he said that's what we're shooting for.
Okay.
So they're actually taking appointments for repairs in the new facility for the 2nd.
All right. I was just up in London getting my car repaired today, so hopefully I can do that down in Santaquin soon. Let's see, and hopefully we'll do a couple other ribbon cuttings as well. As I mentioned in my last update, we received a $92,000 grant from the governor's office to support our home-based businesses with several marketing efforts intended to help these small businesses grow from garage to great. Our first event with this garage-to-great focus is the Santaquin Hometown Market that starts on June 30th. And because I had a few extra minutes, I was able to go sit at the park and eat my salad. And the shade, we're gonna move the event to the southeast corner, south of the playground. And there is a whole lot more shade in that area of the park than there was over on the other side. We can get more booths in there. We're gonna have the stage where the sun's at the performer's back. Trees will shade the people. So we're pretty excited to have that move over there. And we'll line up the food trucks. We're gonna have at least three or four food trucks every night, and we'll line them up along the side of the park. So hopefully y'all have that on your schedules, starting June 30th. It'll be Patriots, Princesses, and Pirates Night. We'll have a big pirate ship. The 23rd Army Band will be playing. And it'll be a really fun kickoff event.
In July, we have Orchard Days, and there's usually a car show in that area. Is that gonna interfere?
No, we are not, and we're not having the event during Orchard Days. So the market runs seven different Monday nights throughout the summer and is a great starting point for some of these home-based businesses to launch their products and services to see how the public receives them. With Brian's help, we are reaching out to invite our local businesses to participate. And working in partnership with the rec department, John, Sean, and Joe, and Ivan are planning some fun family activities to help bring out the crowds. You can look for ads on social media, banners around town, and in your Macy's and Smith's shopping carts with more details or check out, check our website. We desire to get several new businesses to display their products, and we invite the entire community to come and enjoy seven nights over the summer of music, entertainment, family activities, and support for these businesses. And again, we are planning on having several food trucks to provide dinner, so people can actually come down and eat dinner this year and have more than enough food and goodies to take care of the family. And finally, we distributed 1,000 of our Passport to Summer books. Thanks, Norm. And we've got some upstairs and downstairs, and then the other rec department. I don't know, do you call it Rec Department 2, or what do you call the other building now?
It's the recreation building.
What's downstairs? Community service?
The recreation area.
Rec department.
And you are in there again for people to come and meet you, and you can just give them a little signature if you want, or they can come here and get a stamp. My goal with your activity is for you to meet some families that you may not have met in the past and for them to see what an awesome guy you are.
Well, I can understand that. Yeah.
So you're in here on page.
Oh, you don't have it memorized? Sheesh. Oh, no, it's the last one.
Should be the first option.
Page 10. So that's you. So when people come and they say, "I need your autograph, I met you," then go to page 10.
Okay.
So thank you for your participation, even if you didn't know about it.
You're being voluntold.
It's part of the perks of this job.
So there's over 61 activities, 30 businesses in Payson and Santaquin. The businesses are super excited about it. The families last year had a great time. August 9th, we'll have our pool party at Payson Pool. Everyone's invited here, not everybody that's listening to me, but everybody here and anybody who gets at least three stamps. All you need is three stamps. And we got the entire pool reserved this year, so we expect a couple hundred people to show up and have a good time, so. August 9th, if you want to put that on your calendars. Now, I know the mayor is interested in this and maybe Jason, but I was able to travel to Florida last month to celebrate my mother's 90th birthday and my parents' 70th wedding anniversary. And while there, I was able to play a couple rounds of golf. I think I texted you, didn't I?
I, you were telling, where did you go?
You were playing in like 30-degree temps, and I was playing in 80-degree sunshine. So that's.
That's what I'm used to.
But I had, I played two full rounds of golf, which I hadn't done in a week's time in years. One really good round and one not so good. But my goal in the next four years is.
Is to take me?
Is to shoot my age, which means I gotta play more. So if I can ever get this job down to a part-time status like it's supposed to be, I expect to play a lot more golf, but I do need invites. So whenever you guys are going and need somebody, please think of me, call me, so you can help me reach that goal of shooting my age.
Man, that was a shameless plug. Do you have a GIN number?
No.
Do you know what that is?
No.
Okay, you need to get one of those, because we would figure out a way to get you into the tournament sometimes.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah, you need one of those.
What is it?
It's a handicap.
The handicap. What did you call it?
GIN, G-H-I-N.
What does that mean?
It's the UGA, the Utah Golf Association.
Well, see, I gotta play more than two rounds in Florida in order to get that handicap, so.
Well, but you're in Utah, so it's a Utah one.
I know. Well, I will get out and play more, and I would love to get our game in finally this year.
Perfect.
So any questions? That's my report on the Chamber activities. Any questions, concerns, wishes?
I would like you to remember that we do have some new businesses that are opening.
Yep.
And you didn't mention the tire shop, Les Lob, is coming on pretty soon. And they need to be approached as well as Quick Quack and O'Reilly's. O'Reilly's. Have you done O'Reilly's?
We've met with O'Reilly's. He still hasn't scheduled anything for a ribbon cutting.
Okay, and I've still met with some.
We never did a ribbon cutting at the other parts store. They never pulled one off there either.
Yeah, well.
It's hard when they got all those corporate bosses telling them what to do.
Did you talk to Jason about making sure we get the info?
Yeah, he said pretty much like we do with Marty is just ask and we'll get it.
Okay. And then we'll advise them when they get their license that, hey, the Chamber will be reaching out, maybe just, just a plug.
Yeah, we already have, we already have a box on our business applications about if they want their information to be made public.
You'll just have to make sure I'm.
And Jim will tell you that I'm pretty good about letting Jim know when things are opening and when to approach people.
Yeah, you all are very good at reaching out in one way or another.
So yeah, we can provide the Chamber that, and so they can actively reach out to people, but like I say, sometimes.
So Brian's gonna write us up a plan of action, and we're gonna really try to get involved with that.
We do have some new businesses that are getting ready to kick their plans off, and we'll see some new building out in the industrial park and so later on this year.
I know there's a gym out there, and I stopped and saw the, are they Underground Cable? Who's next to the gym?
Fiber.
Fiber?
Yeah, the fiber company.
Yeah, so we met with them, and then the gym I know is getting done, so that's the guy that we met, right?
Yeah, that I, and you're in contact with them? Okay, good.
Good.
So, and I'm here to also present an award for the Chamber Volunteer of the Month of May to Miss Diana Hunt. But unfortunately, she was here two weeks ago but couldn't get here tonight. So let me just tell you a little bit about Diana Hunt. I don't know if you all know her or not. Her remarkable dedication to nurturing a love of music among elementary students has left an indelible mark on our community. For over 11 years, Miss Diana has been a passionate choir director, beginning her journey at Wilson Elementary School in 2008, where all her children attended. Her commitments to music education continued as she established choirs at Spring Lake Elementary in 2013 and Parkview Elementary in 2014. Each week, she dedicates an hour to rehearsing with students from kindergarten to fifth grade, instilling in them the joy and discipline of choir singing. Her efforts culminate in performances at various community events, including the high school, local malls, and festive ceremonies. If any of you were at the Payson High School ribbon cutting last night, there was a choir that sang, which was really great. And I assume some of those were probably her students. But they, I know the high school has some really good choirs and groups. Beyond her work in schools, Miss Diana has taught preschool with Leslie Leroy for over a decade and runs Discover Magic and Magic Explorers courses, blending the art of magic with lessons in empathy and kindness. She also volunteers with United Way, sharing her passion for magic and music to inspire others. Residing in Payson since 2001, Miss Diana moved from Iowa with her husband Scott, who works at BYU. Together, they have raised three children who continue to thrive in their respective fields. Principal Shawna Walker of Parkview Elementary eloquently captures Miss Diana's impact. And I quote, "Her unwavering commitment and passion have provided countless students with the opportunity to experience the joy of music through choir. Her efforts have enriched our music program and made a lasting impact on our students," end quote. We are incredibly grateful for Miss Diana's contributions and are fortunate to have her as an integral part of our community. Thank you, Miss Diana, for your dedication, passion, and the joy you bring to our students' lives.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate it, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Anything else? Did we need to ask him to? We forget anything?
Nope.
Okay. Let's keep up on the businesses, because we're gonna have a bunch this year, okay?
Can you feed me any information as you can?
Okay. Next item is building permits and business licenses.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you can see up there for calendar year 2025, we are up to 145 total residential dwelling units. You can see compared to last year, we were at 119. So right now, we're about on pace to be close to 300 in this calendar year, which would be a little bit above average. You can see usually we're kind of mid-low 200s. For, and we have two new commercial spaces this year. For fiscal year, which we're getting towards the end of the 2024-2025 fiscal year, we're at the 265 compared to this time last fiscal year. We were at 218. So again, it's still ahead of pace. And then we have three new business licenses. We have the Murdoch Ford Business License, and then we have two home occupations, Drymount and Softserve, and JDM Reserve LLC.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next one, the resolutions and discussion items. We'll start with resolution and the DBA on the Icon Cheer Group. This is the one that we've been talking about for a little while, where Mrs. Keel is the head of that, and we've been running it through, it's been done before, this is re-upped, so do you wanna go over it?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, Resolutional 505-2025 is to create an agreement with Icon Cheer, which runs our Santaquin Cheer Program. It's essentially a city program, and they facilitate it for us or administer it, I guess is the best way to put it. We have matured our processes a little bit this year and have made it a little bit more clear-cut about how it works and what goes on and what happens and all that. So that goes not only for this cheer program, but also the martial arts, which is the next one that we'll talk about. But just putting more formal contracts in place. We've worked with Brett. We've worked with both contractors, and they're ready to move on this. And so this is just something to, again, mature our processes, but as the mayor said, re-up this contract in a little bit different format, a little bit different reality, and still have the program. The cheer program is very, very successful, is always in the black, and allows us to have that program for our higher-level cheer. I don't remember the number. Travis could probably tell us, but it's either 100 or 200 people in the program. It's big. It's quite a. And we have folks from as far away as Salem coming to our program here, which tells you that it's a pretty good program. So I'm happy to answer any questions as I can on this, but that's what's being presented tonight, is just to get this formal contract in place.
Well, the one thing that I have heard is this is a very professional way in which we can develop this as a city program, and we get it at a very high level, and I think it's been successful over and over again. We're just trying to move it up the ladder a little bit more, and we need to do this.
What is this changing?
So it will be effective tomorrow.
Okay.
Or today, the mayor.
And what are the significant changes? That's what I'm.
So the significant changes are that the way that it was structured before, and this is both for cheer and for the martial arts, again, that we're coming up on, was that they were city employees, and then they got a contract paid besides their wages. This changes that now, and they take care of their own employees and their own, they become a contract essentially. They're just a contractor. And we have opted a little bit. They were getting, it was a 70-30 split. Now it's a 75-25 split. But again, more of it is being put on them to run the program and administer it. We still have the sign-ups. We still take the fees. And it still is a city-sponsored program, and so those are really the big changes, is the fee structure is a little bit different, a little bit more generous to them, but also less work for us, and also that they're not employees anymore. They are full contract, a full contract company, and when they hire employees, they will be their employees, not city employees. Those are, I guess, is probably the best.
And that was one of the questions I asked when this was even first coming up. And what it falls into is it's a way in which other cities have been doing this, and we're just falling into the same line that the other cities are making sure that they're getting such good coverage for those.
To be clear, other cities still do it the old way that we did it, but many cities are going to this newer way, again, maturing our processes, just making sure that we have more clear-cut lines, insurance, indemnification, other things that are in this contract that haven't been the case before.
Okay, and we still believe that that split still supports.
Yes.
Okay, it's still self, at least, at least self-sufficient.
Yes.
I had one question. This isn't specifically, and I want to make it very clear. I have no concern whatsoever with these resolutions. I just noticed in the contract, as we're moving to that, when we move to vendors, one of my concerns always is about child safety. How are we enforcing or verifying that these vendors are conducting background checks? That it lists in that contract, there's a section on that, and with their employees, now that they're not.
Yep.
Directly.
Very, very good question. We still offer, again, it's a city program. We're concerned about that safety as well. And so we are actually offering to continue to do the background checks for any of the employees that they hire. So it will still go through a very. So it will still go through a very similar process, it just is, again, it's full contract instead of this quasi-employee contract. It, it, it's just a kind of a strange space for me as a, as a professional and for the legal side of it. Uh, this is, this is what we believe is better for the city and it still provides the same or even better protections here. Again, insurance is a big one, right? If somebody gets injured, something of that nature, then they're covered and, uh, uh, under their insurance and then also the city is an additional named insured. So it just is again, maturing our processes and kind of bringing this along so that we can be what we believe is the best protection that we can have as well as having the program be successful.
And, and they, they, bo- both these parties are expecting to keep using the city's.
Absolutely.
Background check services.
Absolutely.
I'm sure, I'm sure, but the main people here, I, I, totally fine. I just, as new people come in, I just, I just worry that people fall through the cracks and that's when you have issues.
Right, and, and we've talked about that, we, that's been a part of our conversation with both of these contractors. John Bradley has worked very well with them and, and they're fully on board with this and understand their responsibilities and what, what the structure is, so I, I think we're in a good spot.
Thanks.
Uh-huh.
Okay, any other question? Then I would entertain a motion on oh five oh five twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Art?
It says on the agenda twenty twenty six.
It does on the agenda, but it's twenty twenty five on the resolution.
Okay, aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
You know, I didn't even know.
You had to hide a detail, seriously.
Thank you for catching that, that's a mistake on the agenda.
Make sure that gets changed by the minute, okay? Change the minutes. Uh, also, oh five oh six twenty twenty five is the same kind of agreement, it, this is with Eric Ty, Ty.
Yeah, this is, this is the one for the martial arts. It's Utah Valley Martial, Martial Arts, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution as well.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Art?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Motion passed. Um, we would like to have a discussion item on the guaranteed maximum price for water reclamation. Wait a minute, did I miss something?
Nope, you're there, you're right on.
Moving fast.
So.
It was fast, it's not going to be fast from here on out, I hate to tell you. Sorry.
Okay, this is the one where I wanted to have John here, right?
Yes.
And uh, we wanna make sure you have a chance to speak.
So John's gonna have his presentation in the reports. I'll start this out and then Jason and John get all the hard questions, I get all the easy ones.
I, I do wanna say one thing as we start, and that is, we've been working at trying to keep this within uh, the money that we have received that has gone straight into it. This is where it gets a little bit difficult and we're gonna have to look even deeper into our pockets as to what we can do over the next little bit and I believe we'll talk about this at this point. So there is no surprise in where this is, but it's also um, very close to what we've been working towards and, and we're still working at chipping those numbers down a little bit, so go ahead, Norm.
So Mayor and Council, we've talked about the upgrades to the, to the water reclamation facility, the WRF, for the last couple of months. Just trying to help you understand that this is coming. One of the things that we've done over the last six years is we have banked a lot of impact fee funds. So right now, keep this number in your mind, we have about nine million dollars sitting in the bank in our PTIF account for all, all impact fee funds that are dedicated to this project, this, this variety of projects. One of the things I want you to help to understand is that the WRF between our storage and our pumping and our treatment and our X, Y and Z, there are seventeen, eighteen functional systems within the WRF. From de-watering to the screens that screen all the junk out of it, to the process, to the membranes, to the blowers, to the backend treatment, to the UV, to the, to the bio-basins, there's eighteen different mechanisms within that facility that, that do all of this stuff. So there's about twelve of those right now that need to be upgraded. Again, from winter storage to pumping capacity, to bio-basins, to membrane trains, to pumps and blowers and a new tank, a large new tank outside that will be in the, kind of the big open area there to the east of the main building. So it, it's quite extensive. We've been about a year, a little more than a year in the design of this. And that's taking into account that the folks that are designing it, designed the original. So they're very well aware of the system, they work with Jason on a regular basis for flows and capacities and when we have problems and something's going awry with the treatment and we've gotta figure things out. These, these guys have known the, the plant for more than a decade now and so they're very good at it, but it still has taken us more than a year just to get to the final design. The final design is done and uh, Vancon, if you remember, we have a, we have a um, CMGC contract with them, construction manager, general contractor agreement with them to actually do the construction. They helped us for about sixty-five thousand dollars. They helped us with the design process and part of that is value engineering, right? If we do this, we can save that. If we do this, we can not have to take that step and save some funds, those types of things. And so we have found over the years that the CMGC process, especially on a very specialized project like this, is very important and very useful for that little bit of cost that it does if you're, if you're, we're talking about eleven and a half to twelve million dollars, so sixty-five thousand dollars to have them help us save money and be more efficient and talk about constructability through the design process is integral to it. So that's where we're at, but again, about a dozen different processes that need to be, or, or areas of the plant and the winter storage that need to be addressed. Right now, our current cost to finish out the project after the final design is about eleven and a half to twelve million dollars, okay? You may remember a couple of months ago, we were talking more like fourteen and a half million dollars, but we have, we have worked again with value engineering. We actually had a meeting with the, the contractor last week with Vancon and sent them back to the drawing board and said, there's some areas where we think you can sharpen your pencil, go talk to your vendors, go talk to your subcontractors and let's get back together. That's why we're not giving you a number today, but giving you an update on where we're at. We anticipate in, on the June third meeting that we will bring a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP contract for as much of the construction as we can fund. Right now, we're about eleven and a half to twelve million dollars, go ahead.
Um, just a question, so when you give that eleven point five to twelve million, you're saying that's, that's the range goal when they come back or what we're currently at?
That's where we're currently at and we're, we're hoping that that's gonna come down a little bit. It's not gonna come down a lot. We, we were, so about a month and a half ago, I met with them and said, we need to get closer to ten million dollars. We came down from fourteen to eleven and a half and we're still, we're still trying to work through it and, and do all that we can to bring those costs down to where we can get closer to the cash that we have. The cash that we have right now is nine hundred thousand dollars, so we're, sorry, nine million dollars. My bad, it's, I've, I've got all kinds of numbers in my head and I apologize for that, but right, right now we have nine million dollars on about twelve and a, eleven and a half to twelve million dollars in costs, so you also remember, part of our discussion that we had some weeks ago was about the possibility of bonding. Okay, bonding rates have come down a little bit, they're not a lot lower, but they're maybe one or one and a half percent lower than they were a year and a half ago, two years ago on the municipal side. Not, maybe not in the, in the private world or in the private sector, but in the public sector, the, the bonds are, I think when we talked about a fire station a couple of years ago, we were pushing six percent and I think we were, I think we're about four and a half right now. Again, that depends on where you can lock it in. All that, on municipal bonds, I, I think that's where we're at, but so the reason I'm, I'm saying this is because I'm going to, to recommend that we look at potentially bonding for two and a half to three million dollars over the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days, and here's why. That four percent or four and a half percent cost of inflation, cost of, of credit that we would have to pay is going to far, be far less than if we wait for a year or two and the costs just continue to increase. If we don't strike while the iron's hot now, we're just gonna continue to see the same thing that we've seen over the last five years and that is costs are going to increase, whether it's supply chain, whether it's uh, labor force, whether it's tariffs. By the way, our membranes come from Europe through Canada. So there's going to be a, a cost, an increased cost just in the membranes and I wanna say that's probably on the tune of about sixty-five thousand dollars is what the increase in that cost currently looks like in the budget that we're at in that twelve and a half to, or eleven and a half to twelve million dollars. So, uh, the, the thing that I am going to recommend is that we bring back a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, next council meeting, for as much as we can squeeze in for the cash that we have, the nine million dollars, recognizing that that kind of uses the majority of our cash, but also recognizing that we continue to have building permits come in, we continue to collect impact fees on those building permits and therefore it won't necessarily use up all of our cash right now today because the contract is a year-long contract. We're gonna be on the ground at least a year constructing and then paying for these items. There's probably two to three million dollars upfront that we need to do as rapidly as we can get the GMP in place so that they can order materials that either could have or will have tariffs or are long lead items. There's some of those items that are probably ninety to a hundred and twenty days before, or a hundred and eighty days before we even see them on the ground. So we can do the construction and prepare, tho- those are things like blowers and the membranes and other things that, that go along with this, so my, my strategy right now is that we're, we're, we're going to bring to you a, a nine million dollar plus or minus GMP in two weeks to get as much flows in there as we can and then as we bond or as we present to you a bond over the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days is what I'm anticipating it's gonna take us to bond for that two and a half to three million. Then we can look at uh, continuing to have the contractor sharpen their pencil. There may be some work that we can do. There's a couple of pumps that we could probably save, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars on if we do the work versus having the contractor do the work, just because we can buy a little bit here and a little bit there. We can have our electrician do some things and, and work with their electrician. Those types of things are things that we can take on ourselves, but it's very miniscule. It's not like we can do three million dollars worth of work. It's maybe a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand over the, the course of the next year where we can make that happen. So, I, I think money-wise and project-wise, that's where I wanted to present. I'm happy to answer any questions. If you wanna know more about the technical side of things, Jason and John have been much more involved in the final design uh, on this because I just haven't had time and I haven't been in all the meetings with the contractor and the design engineers. Yes, sir.
I have two things. I'd like to know Jason and John's opinion of, of what's been proposed. And also I'm wondering, what has instigated the need for the upgrade? Is it age or is it growth or a combination?
This is, this is one hundred percent growth-related.
Okay.
One hundred percent for, for growth, some growth that's already taken place. That's where we've gotten some of the impact fees and some growth that's going to be coming yet.
Okay.
So it, this, this is a hundred percent impact fees. This is not O and M or operations and maintenance, it is not utilities, it's not repair and replacement. This is one hundred percent all-new capacity of the, of the WRF.
I, I think there's one thing that you didn't say in the middle of all of this and that is, there's a reason that we have nine million dollars that's sitting there. It's because of the growth that we have had that's kind of affected this, but it's paid the biggest portion of it. And, and we do get benefit of, of upgrading and getting it renewed after having it in the ground for nearly fifteen years, but uh, I think the, the thing or the message that would be nice to, to be out there is when these new developments came in over the past few years, they've paid into this to get us to this level that we're not looking at this as though it's twelve million dollars we've gotta come up with. It's sat there, it's gained interest, we've been able to hold it and we're ready to move forward.
All, all legally per the state of Utah code for impact fees, that's all, that's all accurate and they've also chewed into some of the existing capacity that we had at the time, so that's helped. This is a renewal as well as, we've got, we've got probably several hundred homes out there that not even have paid impact fees but are not contributing to the use of the facility yet because they're not hooked up, they're not lived in, they're being built, they're building, being constructed. That two hundred and sixty units right there, probably most of those are still yet to be used at the WRF. Did you have another question, Art? Did you say you had two questions?
Um, I'd just like to hear from a public works director and engineer with their opinion if, if, if this sounds like what should happen to them. Come on, Jason, don't be bashful.
I think, I think one other thing that's important to remember.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, one other thing that's important to remember is when we build the WRF, we put a lot of extra concrete in the ground and, and we're gonna see a substantial savings from that by doing this project. Now, because of some of that concrete that's in the ground, we don't have to build another bioreactor, it's already there. We just gotta put equipment in it. We gotta move some pumps around, things like that. I get letters from vendors. Seems like Geneva Rock is always sending out once a year, ten dollar increase in per cubic yard of concrete, you know, it's just continually, our pumps have continually gone up when we go to replace those pumps, blowers, things like that.
Electrical.
Electrical is huge, yeah, so I, I really believe that uh, there is some benefit in, in doing this project now and, and not, uh, not waiting, like Norm says, there are some things that we can do, the reclaim uh, pump station, that's something that we can handle, the UV. We could, we could move those modules, but there is still substantial cost in equipment doing, you know, if we add those, so. Um, yeah, my opinion is, is that it's, it's a good time to do it and I understand that, you know, thinking about bonding, borrowing money when interest is high as it is is a big concern to, to anybody, so. But uh, yeah, I, I recommend that we move forward.
Thank you. John?
So um, one thing that I've always tried to do, even be, um, I kinda picked it up from Norm, is I've always tried to construct things that makes it easier for public works guys to do and to do that as efficiently as possible. And as Norm mentioned, never, nothing's gonna be as cheap as it is today. Costs are always gonna go up. And so um, to be able to, to get us to the point with the WRF to make it so that treatment-wise, we're able to treat the, the wastewater that makes it down to, to the plant and actually give us um, some additional uh, water to use for irrigation season, um, is, is beneficial to do it now and get that rolling. So um, I say everything that the Norm mentioned, I, I agree with and say we've been working very tightly with, with both JUB, the design engineer, and Vancon, the, the contractor that we got on board to help make sure these costs, we're getting the best bang for our buck on there.
Any estimate on how long this project would take to completion?
Um, probably as Norm said, close to a year is when we'd be over the process of it. And during that construction, that plant's gotta be operational. We've still gotta take.
Yes, it does.
We've still gotta take that one million gallons per day that we, we see spikes at. We see that flow make it down to um, down to the, the treatment plant. So we still have to make sure we're taking care of that and this, uh, during that whole process, so.
Thank you. Jason talked about.
I, I have another question for you.
Okay.
Uh, have you done any kind of uh, analytical uh, scientific study on uh, expectation of the cost of the membranes or any of the components that we need to uh, buy ahead of time or buy at a time of the year which would be better off or any, any of those statistical things that you could possibly pull out that would help you um, buy things in, in.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, so.
Ahead of time.
We bought the membranes a year ago. We paid the initial payment on the, in membranes a year ago 'cause they were, I wanna say they were sixteen or eighteen months out at the time.
Yes.
Yeah, it seems like I remember that. Did we pay for it?
We paid for a part of it so far.
Okay, is that still a part of the, the ten million that we have that's sitting there?
The remainder of the eleven and a half to twelve billion includes the remainder of payment. I wanna say it's, it's twenty-five or fifty percent is what's still owed on those membranes and I wanna say that was a six hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred thousand dollar contract, so about half of that is still due and that's figured into, you can tell me if I'm wrong on that, but that's figured into the balance that we need to complete the project. It's not just.
With those membranes that are coming in too, do they replace the membranes that are sitting there so that we become all?
That's a different contract.
That's a different contract.
We've done a contract to do a, over ten years, we do a replacement of the existing ones.
Right.
Um, but this one, this one is separate. This is getting a, a new membrane and a whole system set up at that other train.
So do we have some staged that, or part of that that would be replaced if we find that there's one that's failed?
At this point, no, but right now, you say Jason could do this better than I can, but I think everything operational is going.
Go ahead, come up to the mic, Jason, please.
We do have, we do have redundancy in the filters, so if, if we lose a train or a cassette, we still have capacity to, to take the flows that we have coming in, so that's the one good thing about, well, treatment plants in general always have redundancies.
They, they have to.
What's our, what's our outflow, flow in uh, GPM right now?
You know, we're, we're averaging point nine.
So we've come up uh,
from about seven, five or eight in the last two, two and a half years, haven't we?
Yeah. And on the weekends, Sundays, you know, we'll see over a million gallons a day.
So that's better than fifteen percent in that timeframe. So expectations of growth might be part of that work or that statistical development that we ought to maybe put together. Uh, the other question I had is knowing that we have membranes that are coming in, we also have pumps and, and a whole bunch of other components that we're going to have to bring in. Where are they going to be stored? They can't be put outside.
No, I think we'll, we'll coordinate with Public Works, with Jason's guys to, and to use what space we can onsite. Part, say Norm mentioned a little bit earlier that roughly around that June council meeting, we're, we're going to present that, that GMP to, to the council. Um, that will also include basically immediately getting purchase orders and stuff in place with vendors on getting those materials leased ordered so we can lock in our, our pricing. If things are coming in, we'll rely on Van Con, the contractor to, to provide storage for that material, appropriate storage, because they, they will take ownership of responsibility for that equipment. We say we may be purchasing it before, but within the contract, they are taking responsibility for all those materials.
Well, my, my thinking on that though is do we want to have some kind of environmental control on any of those components, especially the membrane? If it gets here in the middle of the winter and it's still sitting for another four months or something.
We have the ability for that. We have that big, long walkway area in there that we've done that same thing. We've got membranes in there. They, they typically try to time the membranes so that they aren't sitting there a long time, but we have them in a controlled space so that we don't have an issue with freezing or anything like that. They'll, they'll likely get here before freezing weather hits, but if they don't, they're, they're shipped in a controlled environment. They're, we'll store them here. We'll, we'll do all that we can to work with Van Con on things like electrical and the membranes and other things to store. We've, we've got plenty of storage space there at the site that they're not going to be using. Right now, we park our back truck inside in there in the winter time, but during the summer it's open. So I, I think we've, we've done, we've been through this before. We've, we've done two or three million dollars worth of upgrades over the last several years, several times, and we've got facilities to be able to handle, I think, all of that stuff.
I've got some questions for both of you before you sit down. I, and, and I don't know if you said it, what's the added capacity? What's the increase?
So this should get us close to, I believe about another four hundred or so million, uh, point, four hundred thousand gallons per, per day increase is what it'll give us.
Which if you're at nine hundred thousand right now, that's a little less than half again.
Correct.
Does that equate to maybe three thousand more homes?
No.
No. Um, so we're at about fifty, I think we're about fifty-four hundred connections at this point to our, our sewer system. Um, that would give us, yeah, maybe another two thousand.
So, so one of the things that we don't try to do is we don't, we, we add capacity according to the, to the systems that we have, not per door. And here's why, because a, a car wash, for instance, is like adding a hundred homes. Literally, it's like adding one hundred homes. Just one car wash. So we're, we're adding capacity and that capacity gets eaten up and paid for by the car wash or by the hundred homes or by the two hundred and sixty-five. There, there is no finite amount that we can say, yeah, this adds three hundred and eighty-seven point five homes. It just is because every home is different. When we need to upgrade again several years from now, we'll look at it again. We'll have our, our master plan updated. Flows will be updated, estimates will be updated, and we will know where we're at and, and how much more we can grow.
But the volume is accurate. I mean,
Yes, the volume, the volume.
We can, yeah.
It's the overall volume that we look at, not how many doors are we going to add because we don't know how many car washes or food establishments or processing facilities. I mean, again, that, that's not something that we have control over or know exactly. So we just add the capacity that we add and then it gets used up and bought into by whatever comes or however many come.
So I have three more questions for you guys. Sorry. Are, are all of these upgrades onsite to the water reclamation facility? Or is this going to require additional upgrades to the infrastructure leading to and leading out of the water reclamation facility?
So, so I can answer that. The winter storage ponds have work. The Center Street lift station has work and the WRF has work. If you're asking if we're going to be cutting into roads, the answer is no. We're not going to be adding pipes or doing other things like that. That happens with other types of capacity. This is more of a treatment and storage upgrade than it is distribution. Is that accurate, Jason? That, that most of the work that will be done, will be done outside of roadways on three different sites.
So we, we don't have significant prerequisites outside of the water reclamation facility to fully utilize these upgrades? Or what are the significant prerequisites to fully utilize these upgrades?
So if, just so I'm clear, are you, so the question you're asking is are we going to have to modify our existing collection system of, you know, basically pipes in the, in roadways and there at this point? No. With this, with this upgrade that we're doing, this is, we have the capacity to get wastewater flows from homes and throughout the city to the plant, to the lift station. The lift station will then be upgraded as part of this to get those flows from that lift station to the treatment plant. But other than that, everything is really there at the site. This is treatment upgrades, not collection upgrades, which is your pipelines, your manholes, et cetera.
And, and our storage, we're not going to be, you know, overflowing a dam by running this at full utilization.
At this point, no. We are looking at, as Norm said, storage will be, we're looking at upgrading our storage as well to account for that extra water.
So we had a conversation several weeks ago in a council meeting about the need for storage, additional storage. We have at this point in time, at the current growth rate that we have, probably five to seven years worth of additional storage. Some of it we're building with this project or modifying with this project. After that, then the answer is yes, we need it. So if what you're, what you're really understanding is that there's always going to be projects. Some of them are storage, some of them are treatment. Some of them, we do have some collection system areas that when we get to certain flows, we've got to make a connection here because the pipe down going the other way is going to be overflowing. Not overflowing, but at capacity, right? So there, there's, the, the best way to understand this is to go review the, the, the master plan. And there's project lists in there and those project lists have approximate dates and, and capacities of when there will be needed.
Okay. Yeah. And then I, I mean, going through the water reclamation facility with, with you, Jason, it, it didn't seem like it required a lot of personnel to be constantly keeping it running. It, it seemed like a lot of it was autonomous. There was supervision. Is this going to require more personnel hours or a strain on anyone's workload by, by expanding? Obviously, I'm, I, we need to expand, but I, but like what can we keep in mind for that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate that we'll, we'll need more, more labor, more hours down there. We, you know, that some of the things we are doing are, will help with that. The solids loadout is going to help with the actual hours that the, the guys are spending. You, you could get to the point where you could put a roll-off in there and you could have a contractor come in, pick that roll-up and take it and empty it. That would actually remove hours from the plant, but it would come at a cost. So.
The solids handling is one of the eighteen systems that I was talking about that this has. Also recognizing that somebody had mentioned this either earlier about O and M or, or maintenance. As the plant gets older, we are going to need more staff because pumps wear out, motors wear out, those types of things. Right now, we're standing pretty good, but as the, as the station gets older, there is going to be an increase in cost for additional man-hours to be able to maintain the facility. That's going to be norm, whether it's parks or the WRF or more tanks and booster pump stations, et cetera.
And this one's for you, Norm. In, in the event of bonding, well, when we bond for, for this project, uh, will we update our impact fees uh, to account? And, and how soon do we account for that? To make sure that even though we're fronting the cost for even future development, that when people develop, they're paying their fair share for what we planned and, and foresaw.
Absolutely. So John's actually contacted most of our engineering firms that do our master plans and is underway with getting cost estimates to update our impact fees and our rates. Our rates are looking, we're looking at that with our, our rate study with Zion's Bank right now. So we are making efforts to update all of that information so that we can have, it, it will do two things. It will say, okay, well now we're putting twelve million dollars in the ground and we originally estimated it was ten. So therefore we're, we haven't collected as much impact fees, but then we've talked about other rate structures that we can handle to be able to facilitate that. But yes, the answer is we're, we're in the process right now and hopefully in the next probably hundred and eighty days, we will have all of our impact fees updated so that we're looking at more current costs and looking at the future bonding and that kind of thing.
Because I know the Zion's Bank study is already underway.
Yeah.
Is that going to include the, the financials from this GPM and bonding?
The Zion's Bank will not.
It's not going to close out before we start doing that. So that's taken into account.
So there's two parallel efforts. The Zion's Bank is the financial sustainability and the rates. The impact fees are separate and are more related to the engineering firm and the financial firm that did the, the, the studies for us as far as our master plans and the IFAs and IFFPs. So Zion's Bank did a couple of those finances. So they'll be working tandem at the same time, but they're not wholly related.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're separate tracks, as it were, because you've got the master plan over here and then you've got operations and bonding costs and financing and that kind of thing on the, on the rate side of things as well.
Both are taken into account the cost and
Increased cost, yes.
Increased cost from this exact project. I'm just saying if we don't have a dollar amount, how do they?
Yep.
How, how are they doing the math?
Yeah. So they, they have engineer, the, the engineering companies provide estimates, construction estimates. Um, that's how a lot of the, the future costs of projects are determined. They are based off of current construction values and costs that are out there.
Current from several years ago when the master plan was done. That's why we're updating our
Okay.
So, so yes, we're going to use the best information that we have, the best data that we have. All of these costs will go into that, everything from roads and increased costs of asphalt and pipe and everything. All of that stuff will be input into those updates of the IFFP, IFA and the rates. They will all be in there.
Is this going to take away from any of the storage that we have onsite by the water reclamation facility?
Storage?
Weren't there like some like salt sheds and, and other things?
It's not affected. That's, that's Public Works.
Yep. That won't be impacted by this.
Okay. Okay. That's it.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming here, spending your evening with us, all of you. We need to go into the reports, the officers, staff. John, do you want to start?
So last Monday, council member Adcock and myself, we attended the Mountain Evo Water Agency to it's a, one of their regularly scheduled meetings there to discuss the projects and, and some of the studies that have been underway with that organization. One of the, the study that's been the, the main focus of that currently is the groundwater management plan that the partner cities within the Mountain Evo Water Agency have been basically working with Hassan Alus to, to try to figure out a voluntary way that various cities can work together to make sure we're not depleting our groundwater supply. Um, that's a, say, we've been talking about water, whether it's wastewater or, or water we can use to, to drink and irrigate our lawns with. That's a, a big concern here in, in the arid climate that we're in, semi-arid climate we're in. And so the math that Norm's got up now is just kind of the partnering areas within this, the study includes Utah County, includes Payson, Salem, Spanish Fork, those, and Genoa, Goshen Valley, those, those entities are all part of this. So part of the presentation they talked about, I think it'd be on the next sheet, Norm, is
Sorry, yeah.
Is the, basically the various historical data and the recommendations that Hassan Alus proposed for our groundwater management.
Sorry, it's going to take me a minute here. Sorry, I'm
we're down to the bottom. It is in pretty well numerical or alphabetical order. So this is a, there's a lot of information on this chart in, in relationship to that. So to, to kind of break down just real quick, the top is our historical data when it comes to how much water we have been drawing out of the ground. So that's out of the wells that we, we have, spring flows, that kind of stuff, water that comes out of the ground. The top blue lines, that's what that's indicating. The middle bars there are indicating the amount of water that we can withdraw from the aquifer and not be in, in concern of draining the groundwater. And so as long as we kind of maintain where we're at and staying within those bands, those, say it shows kind of three kind of yellow color, yellow, pink and a dark lighter yellow. As long as we're staying within that, that range, then our, we don't anticipate that the groundwater is going to be depleted. Um, that leaves a bunch of issues down the road as well.
So John, correct me if I'm wrong, but these numbers up here and all of these numbers for historical use include culinary and PI, not just culinary.
That is correct. That's all the water that we have reported to the state over the last fifty, sixty years.
And council and mayor, you can see that this is as of 2024, we're in a pretty good spot as, but as we continue to grow to get out to 2065, we, we start seeing a, a much heavier depletion of groundwater. So again, as we've talked about over the last two years, being smarter about our water, water conservation, getting water from other sources, CUP water, all of those are kind of our breadbasket plethora of different sources that we will need in the future, but don't necessarily need completely today. Does that make sense?
Put that up so I can see the dates down below.
Yeah, so the black, black vertical line is 2024. Go ahead, Art.
We had a nice spike in the early eighties. I wish we could repeat that.
Yes.
Without, without the flood, without the flood.
Oh, without the flood. But then on the bottom there, that's the, the, the recharge or the amount of water that's been put back into the aquifer. So as, as Councilmember Adcock mentioned, you know, around that eighty-two, eighty-five kind of, there's a bump up in there, yep, right through there. That we had that bump increase in, in water going into the aquifer. And then it's been pretty consistent. You know, there's little variations you go through there, but it's fairly consistent. Uh, and then as they, say, continue to study as, as Hassan Alus and Mountain Evo Water Agency works, uh, continues to refine the, the model and things will tighten up a little bit.
This, this here will be adjusted. As you can see, they just assumed an average value of going up to thirty years.
So with this information, basically the next sheet shows kind of the, the recommendation or the, the proposed plan that Sanquin would do to make sure we're not depleting the aquifer. Um, these do vary. Say there are some entities included in this and
They're down here.
Are down pretty low on that, that bar. Uh, but we're, it says we're, shows pretty flow. Basically, the recommendation is that we will basically pump the same way we have been. And that's based on a few things. One is because our facilities haven't changed, our wells, you know, our tanks and that kind of stuff changes a little bit, but from here to next year, it's not. So we're really going to kind of stay in that same range. We may pump a little bit more just because due to growth as a part of that. So.
Yeah. So this is a one-year look. This is a, this is a historical, more than a hundred years in this page. This, this page is basically saying, here's how we recommend, Hassan Alus recommends we operate our system this year, which is very much like last year.
Yep.
How, how far away from a new culinary well are we looking or planning right now? Cause I haven't looked at the plan for a year or two.
Yeah. So we've got, um, we've, we've got a proposal for a, uh, to start the design on a well. It's still in review stage on that. We're still looking at that. But right now where we're lacking is redundancy on our culinary well side. We experienced a couple of years ago, we had multiple wells fail on us, whether it be motor failure and then construction, you know, issue on another. We, we found that we don't, we don't have enough redundancy in our system to account for, for that loss, especially during
We do have redundancy in our pumps though right now, right? Or our mo, our motors.
Our motors set aside, yes, yes.
It's, it's our source that we're, that we're not redundant on. If our Summit Ridge well goes down and another well goes down, really we only have what comes out of the, the canyons to be able to provide our, our culinary water source.
But again, we're in a much better spot than we were several years But again, we're in a much better spot than we were several years ago when that happened because we have the majority of the city now that's on secondary water. Back then, we didn't. We we were still feeding uh, more than a third of the city culinary water for their outdoor watering needs. Now we we're, we've taken that offline and we don't have that issue.
Have we have we considered, uh, validating our Center Street well and tying it into the culinary?
Yes.
Is is it any closer?
No.
No, it's not any closer. Um, we do have it with, we've got a groundwater management plan already for it. We actually have, um, worked with the state to have that kind of be tracked as a potential culinary water well. So we've made those those steps and to kind of work towards that. But yes, we do have that capability or future capability to make that switch and get that over to a culinary site as well.
John, that's a source protection plan, not a groundwater protection study.
Thank you.
Have we tested that at all or?
We pump it every year.
Kind of hard to separate that right now, isn't it?
We do pump it every year and we do maintain the testing on it just to keep those, keep those in so we know one day we might have to turn that back to the culinary well.
There's still some work to do on that source protection side of things and we may have to do some physical updates to it to put a, uh, what do they call it? Concrete collar around it to keep it from being contaminated, but it's it's, we we still have it as a possible source.
We, you know, forty years ago, we used to run that back up to the tank.
Yeah. Right now, it's up to the PI system. We 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 disconnected that, I want to say, ten years ago and put it into the PI system because we needed more PI water. So that's where it's currently connected to, but it still can serve as a drinking water source.
Yes.
Might be something to think about with, uh, CUP coming online too, to help augment that instead of, I, I don't remember it being a big, uh, flow, but at least there's
It's something.
We haven't used it extensively for the last five years, although we do pump it to make sure that it's still moving and flowing and lubricated and stuff, but we haven't used it as a source for a majority of our water. It's it's just enough to pump it to keep it going for a week or two or a month or whatever.
Would be interesting to look at the age of the, uh, of the bells and the the motor and you know, any other things, just in case we do want to look at it, especially if we have any kind of downturn with the dry weather.
We contemplated connecting that back up several years ago while the the two wells were down. We we were
Yeah.
That close.
I know that was
Well, Jason was out of town.
It's not, uh, it's not as high of capacity, a high producing well as, as I mentioned, our Summit Ridge well. Uh, but yes, that is, um, that is an option that could help supplement if something does go down. So, yeah, we we've kept that in in our back pocket in case we we ever need to use it for culinary side.
I like those kind of things.
Have we discontinued using culinary water and PI? Is that what I heard you say?
In the majority of the city, there is still one area on the east bench that doesn't have a tank or a booster pump. But it's, I want to say, less than three hundred homes out of the fifty-five hundred that we have. So it's the the majority of the city is now on PI water and not culinary.
Good, that helps there. So, um, let's see, the other, and, uh, they did talk about um, kind of moving on from Mountain Ebo, they did talk about, you know, their future budget and future projects that um, they would be doing. Um, as part of that, they were looking at keeping Hassan Alloose on board to continue to help with the groundwater monitoring and to to help us develop a, um, the conservation plans and, you know, how much water we could act, how many acre feet we can actually suck out of that that aquifer before we start to deplete it. So that's going to be part of the the future look they're doing there. Oh, that's, yeah, that right there is just to show, basically, you can kind of see where we're sitting in relation to other other members of the Mountain Ebo Water Agency.
It was nice to sit in that meeting and see that we were in the top third.
Yes, and so it
If you look at North Utah County, the majority of North Utah County is down here. That that's not part of this study, but that's one of the things we're trying to avoid is mining the aquifer. Mining meaning we're taking more out than is being put back in through natural infiltration and and replenishing the aquifer. But you're right, this is a, this is a good spot to be in.
Well, one thing they pointed out is the aquifer is just one great big puddle.
Right.
If American Fork draws, it's going to bring ours down and vice versa.
Eventually, yes.
It's just one big puddle of water.
Yep, one big cup.
And, um, so one other item, just real quick, Art, I mean, uh, Art talked about it a little bit before the council meeting. They did indicate as part of the Mountain Ebo, they were mentioning the the water, um, what the Division of Water Rights is currently starting to move down into South Utah County with. And that's what their process called adjudication. Essentially, what that is, is basically the state Division of Water Rights is going in there validating the the water rights and basically getting prepared for a a judge to make a ruling on how much water rights are available within Utah County.
If I, if I understood what they said, we have to kind of defend our right.
We do have to, we do have to show that we are using the water that we have our rights to. That is correct. And so, um, that that process has started, um, and and actually Benjamin, there's one that we're involved with on there as well, so.
How how many of those well rights do we have that we haven't worked or got into play yet because uh, we've had on the budget trying to get that another well put in and, uh, I know that we had the rights for that.
Yeah, so cities are, we can, if we're showing that we have need for those water rights, because yes, we have more water rights and we have the physical physical capability of using. Because we don't have our, the wells needed to pull that out, pipes, storage, et cetera. But we show, we can show through engineering studies, through our forty-year plan, is what that study is called, it's a forty-year plan, that shows that we do need those water rights. So cities are a little bit different than an agricultural user, um, or another user would have it, say, in the county that's on a well or something like that, or they have so many acre feet to water their cattle or or square footage or acreage to irrigate. They have to show that beneficial use. They have to actually show they have that capability of pulling and using that water. Cities are a little bit different in that fact. We still need to show that we're using the water, but we can also show that we will need that water in the future to serve our future anticipated demands. So.
Okay, we're in a good spot.
One thing they point, one, they, one point they, if, one thing they pointed out, if I got it correct, a water right is decreed rights, certif- certified application and diligent claims. Not water rights are shares, share statements and contracts, change applications, and shares from developers.
Yeah, so the kind of difference in that is, is so say, local irrigation company, you, we own shares in a local irrigation company.
The irrigation company owns the water rights.
Yeah.
So we do have a right to use that because we own those shares. But it's it's separate than what our water right is that we have associated with our wells or that we get from our springs coming out of Santaquin Canyon.
You can only imagine how happy I was to have John at that meeting. My degree has nothing to do with water.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Oh, there is one thing, there is a meeting. They're proposing to host a meeting with local, state, and federal elected and staff officials for the purpose of educating them on South Utah County water demands and infrastructure. It's on July the first at noon at the Spanish Fork Library. And each of our representatives, um, Mr. Welton and and Mr. Hinkins and and Mike McCall have all been invited to that and so have the county commissioners and our and our federal legislators as well.
Okay, thanks. Good, we can go on to the next ones. Jason?
Yeah, just a a couple of things. For our upcoming meetings, uh, DRC and Planning Commission next Tuesday. Uh, for for DRC, we right now only anticipate one item right now. This is a a site plan for Silver Creek Design in the industrial park. That would be the only thing that we have right now for DRC. Uh, Planning Commission, we don't have any pending applications, and so we anticipate that that meeting will be canceled. Works out all right because we already have some planning commissioners who wouldn't be able to be there anyways because it's the day after Memorial Day. So, uh, one item on DRC, no planning commission is expected next Tuesday. Just a quick other, a couple of things to follow up. Um, my hometown, uh, I was able to go to a meeting last this past Friday. Uh, we had the executed contract with them. They have, uh, called their directors. And Mayor, remind me their names, the Davises.
Calvin and Natalie Davis.
So they're they're going to be the directors of of my hometown here in Santaquin. They're looking to to kind of create the foundation and structure of 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 getting other, uh, directors to help with the the Community Resource Center, which is going to be in the LDS, um, church building that's just down on the west side of Main Street. What Santaquin residents affectionately know as the Pizza Hut Church. So there, there's progress being made there and and, uh, we we anticipate that there'll be some, uh, sometime later this year, there'll be some programs and stuff that'll start from that. Other things I could report on, but I'm almost certain that that, uh, council members or the mayor will report on it, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Norm?
Yeah, council members and mayor, just reporting on the water situation. The Snow Tale site is registering no snow up there and no water. Now, be careful, that's not all that's up there because that's only at seventy-four hundred feet in elevation. There's a lot of mountain above that, and so we still continue to run about a normal, a normal high runoff water. Sorry, not a normal high, but a normal amount of runoff water right now, about thirty-second feet is is coming off and is very orderly. We don't anticipate any flooding or or danger of property damage or anything of that nature. It's it's being handled very well by the by the Flood Committee and the Irrigation Company. Wanted to report to you for, if you've seen on that east bench, that Comcast is starting that work that we talked about two weeks ago. They're doing some micro trenching and and installing, uh, fiber, uh, fiber optic for their system.
You mean CentraCom?
Sorry, I'm sorry, CentraCom, that's they're both C's and they both sound alike and I apologize. Yes, that is correct, not it is CentraCom, so thank you for that clarification. If you have any, it's just that narrow band up there around nine hundred east that they're doing on the east bench right now and they'll probably expand into that in the future. I do want to point out that that, um, the mayor's newsletter will be coming out this week or next week and and in that is a is a statement about the potential property tax that's concluded, increase that's currently contemplated in the in the tentative budget. Uh, I just want to make sure and announce that in each meeting so it's very apparent and public that remember that the public hearing for that specific property tax increase will be proposed increase will be on August seventh, twenty twenty-five at seven PM in this room. The Main Street project is moving along. They, uh, plan to be, in the in the first couple of weeks of June, they plan to be paved on the north side of the road. The weather has put them back a little bit. The water line has taken and and connections to homes and businesses have taken a little longer than they anticipated. But things are moving along there and and moving along nicely. So we anticipate probably in the next week or so, they'll start filling the big void that you see there, bringing it up and getting ready to put asphalt in sometime in the first couple of weeks of June. And then promptly moving to the south side. The south side, we're hoping, doesn't take as long because there's no new water line going in there, and so it's probably just going to be an excavation, fill it back in and and start moving along and and, uh, their tentative plan right now is to have everything paved sometime mid to end of August. The the whole thing done and then just working in the in the planters and concrete and that kind of thing outside of the asphalt after that. Their contract currently runs until January of next year, but we anticipate they're going to be done sooner than that because of the favorable winter that they've had. And now the wet spring is slowing down a little bit. CUP update, they continue to move, uh, and and put water line in, the the big water lines out in the fields and structures and that kind of thing. Again, their contract runs through next year, but they're they're anticipating being able to fill and test the system towards the end of this irrigation season. We won't get any test water until next year, but that's their anticipation right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on other items that I may not have touched on or that I did touch on.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Just had an update. Uh, we had a RAP Tax and Community Services Board meetings yesterday. I'm just blown away at, we have like really good people and on the, on that board and on that RAP Tax Committee. Uh, I'm just really grateful that that they're so passionate about it and they're smart and they have good ideas. Um, not everyone has the same ideas, but it, I I I think that they made some really good recommendations for the RAP Tax, um, spending. Looks like we have a little bit more fun, significantly more this year in the RAP Tax and so things like the the Recreation Activity Building and other bigger projects. One of the things I did want to note from that meeting was there was a lot of interest in increasing shade. And, um, maybe Jason Callaway will be rolling his eyes about adding trees into places, but, um, uh, there were ideas that were brought up about possibly adding, uh, so one of the recommendations was a certain amount of money for adding trees to our parks, um, since a lot of our newer parks have no trees. Uh, a fund for that, some money for that. Uh, one person on the committee asked a question and I wanted to bring it up here. Do we have any plans to add trees to the south side of our main cemetery? It was brought up that there's trees in other parts and I know that that's a lot more maybe in the middle of it, but it was even brought up, well, could there be like on the outside, something that makes it feel like you're not in like a fishbowl open field? I didn't know, and there wasn't like, we need to do this, but it was more just a curious of have we thought about adding anything to make it not like this open fishbowl field in that part of the cemetery?
So I had a good conversation with John Bradley today about your meeting and about this item, and he's going to be getting with Jason and talking about where we can put some of those trees and what we can do. This is probably too new to Jason for him to answer any question accurately at this point in time, so.
If you have any, come up to the front, so the 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 viewers on our screen.
I just caution you, Jason, you don't have to have all the answers right now.
We do have, uh, we did designate spots in the cemetery for trees.
Okay.
So they're already designated for those and, uh, we we just did a tree order for Main Street and I talked to Brad about, uh, he was actually gonna look at some trees for us for the cemetery also, so.
John, right? Yeah.
He's talking about the tree supplier, not John Bradley.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Brad, Brad Olson.
Okay.
Yep.
No, that's great. That's great. And then, um, it was also brought up by one of our committee members that uh, there's grant money for trees, uh, from and and I know John Bradley's gonna look into all this, but I just wanted to bring it up to to the council too. It's called Tree City USA. There's grant money. Um, we just need an arborist that works with the city. Do we have any arborists with the city? Anyone that's qualified, um, that could help you get the grants? If we do know somebody, it would be great to have them as a vendor for the city, uh, to help us qualify for that grant money if it, if that is the case. That would increase a lot of the opportunity to get those trees that without a significant cost to the city. Another thing that got brought up that I wanted to bring to staff, uh, and it's great that you're still here. I was worried that you would leave, that, uh, you wouldn't be here. I've noticed in the events in the multipurpose room is that the lights don't go very low. And even when we had our chamber gala, I, a lot of comments were, it's really bright in here, which is fine. It's just it doesn't set the mood for an evening, uh, thing. And I know that I think the electrician can do some jerry rigging and so it was brought up in the Recreation Activity Building. Could we plan ahead for that? And is there something that we can look as a city council to designate work or if there's wiggle room to to make it so that those lights could be dimmed or lower for these types of events?
So because we are public buildings, we have public buildings, we have certain safety requirements that we have to meet. And turning those lights off negates those safety requirements.
So there's no possible way?
You have to have, you have to have visible egress for fire situations, smoke situations, people that have been injured and trying to evacuate the building. It it's, it's
How do you like schools do it and in?
They they don't. If you go by a school, they still have lights on in their hallways and in their lunchrooms.
Yeah. As soon as, as soon as lights go off, the generator kicks on and turns it back on. You can't
Yeah, so most of the, most of the lights that you're talking about actually have battery backup. So if you turn the power off to them, they're still on.
Yep. Could we dim them more so they're not off?
We can't.
No, okay. Cause that that is kind of a disappointment. Um, and then I did have a question about adjusting our fee schedule. Um, and then I did have a question about adjusting our fee schedules. I know we talked about that for the facilities, and I don't know if that happened.
We haven't done it yet. We will be doing it in the month of June because we've got streetlights and we've got the building rental and we've got utilities and everything else that will be going on at the same time.
So that'll happen in June and come before us for an approval.
Yep.
To account for all the, because from our previous discussions, we have still
Yes.
A lot of work that we're doing.
Cola on all of our utilities, those types of, all that stuff will be done in the, in the, one of the June meetings.
But those rental rates, because I know, like, when we were cleaning up for the gala and I've seen other events, there's so much work that's put into that. That we talked about even beyond cola, that it actually is costing the city a lot more.
Right. We're, we're going to be including that as well. The 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 cost for, for instance, an all-day wedding will be likely be going up several hundred dollars to be able to cover those costs, because you're exactly right. The, it's not just a little bit of time to have somebody here, but you've got garbage cleanup and you've got floor. You know, we get the Zamboni out and clean the floor so that it's clean for the next folks that are coming in. So we we're, we recognize that and we're working on updating our fee schedule accordingly.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, uh, only other thing is I, uh, we've got really great people in our community services, uh, some of the, it was really great. We, uh, John Bradley has been bringing additional staff that can really give firsthand experience in these meetings to recount to to all the members. And that's been really helpful to have Ivan, our interns and um, Shawna Joe and 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 others that have joined. So I really appreciated that. That's it for me.
Okay, Art?
Oh, I was excited to get a flyer in the mail that says I can earn ten thousand dollars for my parking RVs in my yard. Apparently they haven't checked the city code. That was for entertainment. Thursday on May fifteenth, we had a emergency communication meeting um, with a representative from each of the three districts that have been identified in town. And we're working on developing a a method for each one of those districts to work within themselves with some radios as far as when something happens that they'll be able to communicate one with another. Um, this meeting was in, uh, in concert with myself and, um, Chris Lindquist. Uh, he basically wants a report from three districts in town and not thirty-five or fifty or sixty people when when something happens. So it's, we're developing a reporting system. Um, so that occurs. Um, we probably don't have time tonight or nobody wants to be here much longer. Uh, I was hope to have this on an agenda item for a lengthy year discussion regarding House Bill forty-eight. The Wildland Urban Interface Modifications that have been mandated by the state. And regarding that, at noon tomorrow, U C L T is having a web what do they call it?
Webinar.
Yeah, webinar. Uh, it's an hour, hour program. You can go to U U L C T's website and you can find it. It's tomorrow noon and, uh, it, this whole thing is going to have some impact on on residents and and definitely on the city and and we as a city are going to have to develop some plans and make make some hard choices and decisions to to come in compliance with this mandate from the state. House Bill forty-eight.
Got it.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Uh, I was just going to ask about the canyon because I've had a lot of people asking about that, but I think we've, it's been posted quite a bit. Gates are open on Friday. We're having ribbon cutting on Monday, so that sounds good. Um, there is a family fitness festival in a couple of weeks, first Saturday of June. So if you want to run a five K or not, they're going to have vendors and do exercise, um, classes outside. It was really fun last year, so recommend bringing everyone. There will be activities for adults and kids. Uh, that's all I've got.
I was eating an M and M Peanut while you were talking about exercising. I feel a whole lot better. I got a couple of things. Number one, uh, we're still going to have thirty-second feet of water.
Yeah, for sure.
For the next few weeks, and and the indicator is the Snowman or, uh, Angel Moroni you'll see at the top of, uh, uh, Pole Canyon, that'll tell you when it's going to slow down. That's the the gauge that we've looked at all of my life, so, and it was way before me. And, uh, you still really can't make them out yet, so that's coming. I've also been working with the Division of Wildlife. Uh, they planted some, uh, fingerling trout in the canyon last year up high, which surprised me. And, uh, there may be some surprises for the fishermen. Thought it'd be nice to put that out. And they're also planning a big fish planting operation as soon as the the waters come down, so they kind of gave me a timeframe around the end of June, but they'll actually send me the date that they're going to plant them, so look for that. Um, one thing about the canyon opening, I've been working on trying to get this open forever, but I've also been trying to get them to unlock the damn gates forever too. Sorry about that, but, uh, it was four hours ago that I finally got the true story. Okay, it will be opened and they'll actually open the gates up Friday afternoon.
Okay.
And and you can go up, and even when we we cut the ribbon, there there'll be people that'll be up above us. And they they will allow some dispersed camping, but you'll notice there's new camping signs. They put all kinds of new signs up the road. You know, don't pick your nose in the wrong place, you know. I'm just warning you, who knows what they've put out, so. Uh, one thing for sure is Tenny's Flat will not be open. You'll be able to park and turn your car around right there at Tenny's, at Tenny's Flat, but there's not a lot of parking. If there's four cars, then you're going to have to figure out how to get around each other. But, uh, it can be done. They they will not open the gate. They do have a couple. Uh, the camp host will be there on Sunday. And they're going through, they're painting the tables, they're reconditioning a whole bunch of things, and they're actually going to turn the water on. So they're bringing a crew back up in to, uh, do the water and, uh, they'll go through that operation and probably turn the flushing toilets back on, which is kind of good news. We've been trying to get this all put together, but I found this out four hours ago. That's why you saw it put out on the, on Facebook four hours ago, because that's when it was finally official enough that I dared do that, so. Um, I did want to say Police Week was incredible and, uh, to be able to go back and, uh, become a part of the entourage that was there to support Kinda. And, uh, it was humbling to have uh, seventy-five, a hundred policemen standing at attention when you came off the airplane together. Um, that was humbling, but these guys, there was motorcade that took us to the mall down on the Mall of Washington, D.C. to go to the candlelight vigil, to other things. Just amazing to drive through Washington and not have to stop at a stoplight because it was wide open, but incredible people. Totally humbling and most of the most genuine people you'll ever meet that have gone through the same kind of things that this city and especially Kinda has gone through. And they'd offered a lot of help to her and support and it was just cool to see and to be a part of, and I I'm grateful to have been there. Um, wanted to mention a couple of other things. The curb was completed last week in the industrial park, so they should be about ready to tie up the last couple of roads. Just the tie-ins there. There's one North and South Road and then a couple of pieces to the east or the west that will finish it all up, and this is just in time to to start planting some buildings in there, and I'm looking forward to all of this. Um, grateful. It's all paid for and we're still making money off of it, so it's a good thing. Um, had a couple of questions I was going to ask John and I'll, I'll do that later, so, um, that's most of what I had. What a wonderful thing.
Last time we had a meeting, um, Bill Hoosier's wife made a plea that the city consider every May um, putting up
Blue flag.
Thin blue line flags.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that as some sort of agenda item as a resolution or something.
We, we actually talked about that today in our meeting and and we're going to bring that up next, next month so that we can kind of fit it in with everything. I think we're just trying to get a plan and what they really want to see put into it and include them in part of that decision, so. I I think we're not going to forget that. Okay? Anything else? Then, uh, what I need is to dismiss from this meeting to into a closed session, uh, which may be called to discuss pending and reasonably imminent litigation collective bargaining and or the purchase, exchange or lease of real property, a proposed development agreement, a project proposal or financing proposal related to the development, development of land owned by the state.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay. At this eight forty-two, at the conclusion of the closed session, we will come back in and close the, uh, meeting. And I'd.